Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Lebanon City Council meeting Tuesday, November 26, 2019. Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer?
Here.
Mrs. Monroe?
Here.
Ms. Wyatt?
Here.
Mr. Shope?
Here.
Mr. Ailer?
Here.
Mr. Deary?
Here.
All right, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you again for a beautiful day, for our beautiful community, our city. We ask just now that you would give us wisdom to make good decisions that will benefit everybody in our community and the areas around it, Lord, our business people, our citizens, residents. Father, we pray that you would be watching over our first responders, keeping them safe and protected. Lord, we ask just now that you would bless this time that we have together, that we might make good decisions using the wisdom that you offer. In Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Vice Mayor Messer is on his way. He got held up in some major traffic, so... All right, if you would first take a look at consideration of work session minutes. Oh, and we have none, so let's go on to consideration of regular meeting minutes, November 12, 2019, and a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Deary?
I will abstain.
Okay. Mr. Shope?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Messer? So, no. And Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to recognition of visitors, we have two visitors this evening. If you would please come up to the microphone. Ray Kimberlin, just state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Ray Kimberlin, 416 Cedar Lane, Lebanon, Ohio.
Great. Thanks for being here.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening to the mayor and to the city council. The reason I'm here is I was working last week on updating some information about my church and working on end-of-year giving. So as I was doing that, I got to thinking about all of the different charities that we have here in town and nonprofits, and reading a recent article about how United Way funding has been low this year and how it's impacted local charities. So I went to bed and I woke up, and when I saw this news article out of Cleveland where instead of each individual organization promoting themselves, they did Giving Tuesday as a Cleveland joint effort and a collaboration. So they have Giving Tuesday, Cleveland. So I said, "I'm gonna do that here." There are a few organizations in town that have been doing that over the years, including the Countryside Y, but there are several that just don't have the manpower in their development departments to do a good job of doing end-of-year giving campaigns. So what I have brought today is just an information about the origins of Giving Tuesday. Basically, it was started as a global movement that has expanded over the past seven years, and Bethel participated a few years ago, probably, I think it was like the year or two before the fire, and we did our Adopt a Window campaign and started using the foundations of their principles of just finding ways to give people opportunity to give back and to provide community service. So what I am presenting is an opportunity for the city to collaborate and help promote all of our nonprofits. I have about 12 that are on board to just be on a list. I'm not charging anybody for any of my services. It's just a community give-back. I'm gonna send it out to my contacts, as well as post it on social media, and I would love to see the city actually declare next Tuesday, which is December 3, Giving Tuesday. So thank you for your consideration.
Don't go away.
Okay.
I'll stay right there.
Right.
Great idea.
Thank you.
And I see that you have right now a proclamation.
Yes.
How could we go about doing something like this and be able then? Could we vote on this? Or do something so that... Because obviously, come next Tuesday, we don't have a meeting and we can't officially proclaim it, but a way to be able to promote it through social media and through our website and then...
That would be great.
Those of us could share it on our pages and things like that. How could we go about being able to do that so that it would be promoted on that Tuesday the 3rd?
I can think of two ways.
Okay.
Does... Do all the council members have a copy of the proclamation? Or not? So if not, I would say that probably the best way to do it would be to read the proclamation into the record, and then if the council would choose to have a motion...
Okay.
...to adopt the proclamation, and then we could have...
Perfect.
I think it would be best to do a roll call vote to adopt the proclamation as a statement of council.
How does everyone feel about that? Does that work?
I have a question.
Sure.
Just for some clarity, have you found a list of people that are the charitable givers? Is that what...
I do not have a list of donors, no. What I plan to do is to promote it on social media, also working on establishing a website that will list out all of our charities, whoever wants to be on this list. It's a free, basically, a directory, and people can add their logo or photos, their mission, links for their donation buttons, their volunteer buttons, and just getting the information out to the people responsible.
I know Carol Donovan... I'm sorry. Carol Donovan asked about, you know, who's giving, because people... This is the time of year, hey, I need help. And we do have a certain element of people that will ask. They'll come to me, "Oh, nobody's helped me, nobody's helped me," and then I help, and they go to... And I think that's a... I guess I'm seeing this kind of a clearinghouse as well, is to say we can coordinate efforts to take care of who's truly in need. Is that part of it?
No, this is basically promoting the nonprofits.
Okay.
For example, it would be Bethel Amy Church.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna be doing a holiday food drive, so that's gonna be the push that we have.
Okay.
And we're gonna be asking donors to donate non-perishable food items, our Lunch on Us campaign. We look to receive monetary donations to help feed our students at the Lebanon City Schools. So it's really promoting the organization and their needs for either money and kind donations or volunteers.
Okay. Great.
It's very specifically focused.
And I think once you read the proclamation, you're gonna realize that it's not specific to specific organizations, but the promotion within the... It's really the... When I read it, you'll get the just more of the promotion of citizens, groups, churches, families, all coming together to provide volunteerism, community service to their fellow residents and those in need. So I think that's really kind of... It feels like that, yes, looking through that, the impetus of that, I think, which addresses, I think, a little bit of what you're saying.
I just wonder that... We had a clearinghouse type set up at one point, I never did with the food baskets, and I just wondered if we lost that system?
Welcome.
That kind of...
Yes, and unfortunately, that's not what I'm gonna be doing.
Yeah, and that's fine. I just wanted to clarify.
But I do have a copy of the letter that I did provide to Mayor Brewer. I can give that to each of you.
I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas Giving Tuesday was established as a global generosity movement unleashing the power of people and organizations to transform the communities and the world. Whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they are able to give. And whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favored causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people. And whereas it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday that we support and recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Lebanon, Ohio. And whereas the Giving Tuesday Lebanon Initiative will encourage the citizens of Lebanon to serve throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year. Now therefore, I, Amy Brewer, Mayor of the City of Lebanon, do hereby proclaim December 3, 2019, as Giving Tuesday Day in the City of Lebanon, Ohio, and encourage all residents to join, to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful.
Make a motion, Your Honor.
So is our motion.
Second.
Make a motion.
Second.
Second. All right. Any discussion or comment?
I'll just say, thank you so much for just taking the initiative to do that. It's just regular folks like us just trying to do what's right, and this is fabulous. It's a wonderful reminder. We all get so wrapped up in the hustle and bustle, and it's things like this that it's really all about, and it's things like that that will make the difference for... Continue to make the difference for Lebanon. So thank you so much for the idea and taking the initiative to put so much work into it already. So 100% support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Deary?
Yes.
Mr. Shope?
Yes.
All right.
Do you have a copy of that from the record?
I did. I gave it. Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, and all of you, and the work that you do each and every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So we're gonna move on to our public hearing to rezoning for parcels located at 1831 West Main Street.
Motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right. This is an opportunity for anyone that would like to come to the podium to share their views or thoughts about the rezoning. Please state your name and address for the record.
I do have a few slides, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So the applicant... The owner and the applicant is Redbird Real Estate, doing business as Cardinal Landscaping. The property address is 1831 West Main Street, and this property was recently annexed. So per the city's code, properties in this area that are annexed, they automatically come in under the Rural Residential Zoning District. Obviously, this was an existing business. When it was in the county township, it was zoned for business use, but the default zoning when it's annexed is rural residential. In addition to that, there's a property adjacent that was transferred to Cardinal Landscaping that's currently zoned as Public Institutional, or PI. So the request is to zone... Or rezone, I'm sorry, both kind of parcels, if you will, from what is currently RR, which is this parcel here that represents the current footprint of the Cardinal Landscaping business, as well as this parcel here, which is currently zoned as PI. Both of those would be rezoned to a general commercial use. And again, this just kind of shows the existing zoning designations along West Main Street. This is a photo from the street, looking back at the subject property. And then they have submitted a concept plan. This is the existing building footprint right here. This is kind of the existing access drive into the business. The plans are to do a building expansion off of the existing building, as well as some additional parking. So the expansion would be heading kind of to the east of the building with parking in front and some material storage bins behind the building. That'll be screened by the new building addition. So again, this is a concept plan. They have not, at this point, actually submitted development plans, but as part of the rezoning, they are required to submit a concept plan. Planning Commission did consider this rezoning request at their most recent meeting, and by a vote of four to one, Planning Commission is recommending the zoning map amendment be approved. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. So anyone that would like to come and speak? All right. Motion to close the meeting. Or the...
Public hearing.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Great. All right. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to previous business, number one, ordinance number 2019-089.
Ordinance number 2019-089 is an ordinance to make final appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Lebanon, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2019.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will adopt the City of Lebanon's 2020 operating budget.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mr. Shope?
Yes.
Mr. Deary?
Yes.
Number two, ordinance number 2019-090.
Ordinance number 2019-090 is an ordinance authorizing transfers and reimbursements established by the 2020 budget.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will approve the interfund transfers contained in the proposed 2020 operating budget.
And a motion to adopt.
Motion, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Deary?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mr. Shope?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Number three, ordinance number 2019-091.
Ordinance number 2019-091 is an ordinance amending chapter 918 of the codified ordinances relating to stormwater user fee changes... Or charges, I'm sorry.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will approve an adjustment in the stormwater utility fee from $3.50 per equivalent residential unit per month to $3.75 per equivalent residential unit per month. This has been incorporated into the 2020 operating budget, and I would like to point out, this is the first time the stormwater utility fees have been increased since 2004.
Long time. So a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment?
I'll just say that Mr. Brunka already stated how long it had been since the rates have been raised, and if you figure out like the cost of living, it is well, well below that.
Yes.
So it's... I believe this is a very reasonable increase.
Yeah, I would agree. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Shope?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Deary?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Number four, ordinance number 2019-092.
Ordinance number 2019-092 is an ordinance amending chapter 917 of the codified ordinances relating to garbage and rubbish.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will approve a 5% rate adjustment in the refuse and recycling fees to account for the service cost increase to the city outlined in our current collection contract.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment?
I just want to say, I did the math. We just did two increases here, and it pales in comparison to what I'm gonna save on my electric rates, so it's kind of a good... You know, we did do a couple raises, but our electric is dropping down, and I'm still ahead.
And this also is just to cover the costs of the contract that Rumke and the city have, and so we're not, you know, not trying to make a bunch of money off of this. It's just a matter of trying to cover the costs of what the service costs the city, and it seems very reasonable to me.
Right, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Deary?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mr. Shope?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Number five, ordinance number 2019-093.
Ordinance number 2019-093 is an ordinance creating an outdoor refreshment area and establishing requirements to ensure public health and safety within such area.
And a motion to adopt.
Motion, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? And anyone like to make any comments? Are you good? You good? Okay.
I would like to...
Discussion.
Yes. I would like to explain kind of and preface this to help people understand where I'm coming from, because if things go as I think they will, I may be the outlier on this. And that isn't to say anything disparaging about my fellow council members. I understand they have the city's best interests at heart, and they're doing what they believe to be best to keep our city vital and vibrant, and so... And I get that. I really do. I stated in our work session that it's a matter of conviction for me that I will not vote for the DORA. And part of that, a big part of that, is what I feel like is a message we often send to our young people, that our children, when we have our families out, that in order to be able to relax and enjoy yourself, there has to be alcohol involved. And from my perspective, I think that's a bad message to send, but I do understand it, and before anybody starts trying to do anything on social media to tell me, you know, what Jesus did and things like that, I understand that His first miracle was turning water into wine at the wedding feast in Cana. I understand that it was alcoholic, because the giver of the feast said, you know, "You save the good stuff to last. Most people put the good stuff out first, and when everybody's drunk, then they bring out the cheap stuff." So I get that. I understand. It's not a matter of me thinking it's a sin. It's a matter of where our society is, the role that alcohol plays in our society to the detriment of many families, and from personal conviction, I just will not support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Here's what I would say, Councilmember Shope, you've been very clear from the beginning, your perspective, and I think what's important is that we all are comfortable enough with sharing the perspective that we have and not always totally agreeing with everything that comes before us, and I appreciate that.
And I appreciate my fellow council members who present and create an environment that you feel comfortable disagreeing on things and knowing that you're still friends when you go home, you know, so...
Yep. It's the way it should be, anyway.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Shope?
No.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mr. Deary?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
All right. Number six, ordinance number 2019-094.
Ordinance number 2019-094 is an ordinance amending and supplementing subchapter 925.08K Park Rules and Regulations of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Lebanon, Ohio, to reflect the creation of a designated outdoor refreshment area, or DORA, which impacts certain parks.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will approve revisions to the Lebanon Codified Ordinances, Chapter 925.08K, Personal Conduct Section of the Parks Rules and Regulations, to reflect the establishment of a DORA which permits the consumption of alcohol in designated cups during certain hours for downtown parks within the DORA boundary.
And a motion to adopt.
Motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment?
I'll just say that my stance will be the same, so...
I was thinking so, there, Mr. Deary.
It would be inconsistent.
I was thinking so. All right. Please call the roll.
Mr. Deary?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mr. Shope?
No.
Of course. And Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
All right. Seven, ordinance number 2019-095.
Ordinance number 2019-095 is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a real estate transfer agreement with the Lebanon City School District for certain property located in Lebanon, Ohio.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will approve an agreement with the Lebanon City Schools to transfer property known as the trailer lot to the city for incorporation into the 511 North Broadway redevelopment project as outlined in the development agreement.
All right. And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mr. Shope?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Deary?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to new business, number one, ordinance number 2019-099.
Ordinance number 2019-099 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a Sufin fire engine from the Sufin Corporation. Bless your mother.
Thank you. Mr. Deary?
This legislation will approve the purchase of a Sufin fire engine from the Sufin Corporation in the amount of $603,000 as outlined in the proposed 2020 operating budget to replace an existing fire engine that has reached the end of its useful life.
And a motion for first reading.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We'll see this at our next meeting. Number two, ordinance number 2019-100.
Ordinance number 2019-100 is an ordinance of the City of Lebanon, Ohio, approving an amendment to the official zoning map thereof to 5.42 acres of property located at 1831 West Main Street, parcel numbers 1211, 1000341, 121110034, and 12111000350, from Rural Residential, or RR, and Public Institutional, or PI, to general commercial.
Good job. It's a mouthful. All right. Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will approve a zoning map amendment to rezone parcels numbers 12111000341, 12111000342, and parcel number 12111000350, all located at 1831 West Main Street, which we refer to as the Cardinal Landscaping Parcels, from rural residential and public institutional to general commercial.
Great. And a motion for first reading.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
All right. Number three, ordinance number 2019-101.
Ordinance number 2019-101 is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Ohio Attorney General for delinquent debt collection and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Attorney General's office regarding debt collection services.
All right. And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Ailer.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mayor Brewer.
Yes.
Mr. Masser.
Yes.
Mr. Shope.
Yes.
City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. The next meeting of city council will be an organizational meeting followed by a work session on Thursday, December 5th, beginning at 7:00 PM. So the organizational meeting will be in this room, and then we'll transition down to a work session meeting. And I do have a slide I'd like to remind folks this Friday. November 29th is our holiday illumination or our tree lighting ceremony that begins at 6:30 and will run until 8:00. Our mayor will be giving opening remarks. Obviously, we'll light up the tree in downtown Lebanon for the first time, and there will be free horse and carriage rides in front of the city building with Santa Claus inside the city building.
And I believe a few other surprises.
Okay.
Little dancing elves going on, so I'm excited about that.
Always a fun event and invite folks to come down. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Your Honor, can I interject something?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that the record is clear. On ordinances number one and two.
Yeah.
The budget ordinances, there was an adjustment made from the initial budget numbers that were presented.
Okay.
Mr. Brunka briefed everyone on that. So I wanted to make sure that people understood that real effective...
That's what it's reflected in, the changes.
Yes. The changes are reflected. We didn't change the number of the ordinance. They're not emergency ordinances. So in effect, adopting them as a second read and adopting them, which I would say as a first read with the waiver of the rules is the same thing. So I don't think we need to do anything other than make the record clear.
Okay.
And I don't, I think council's been made aware of that through electronic correspondence, but I don't know that that's in the minutes, and it should be.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
And I apologize, I should have...
No, you're good.
...caught that earlier.
Great. Thank you. All right. It's that part of the meeting that I wish I didn't have to deal with or say, as I say, as I say, see you in other places. Councilmember Ailer and Councilmember Deary, this is your last official meeting. I don't know, of course, I have a few words that I would like to share, I didn't know if there were others. Hard for me to do, actually, in trying to formulate the words to say to you. It's really been an honor and a privilege to serve with both of you. You have been absolutely amazing councilmembers. You've had the city's best in all your decisions that you've made. You know how much you care about the city. And I will say to you, you will absolutely be missed. I felt, and so it's been a privilege to, to work with you and sit beside you. You've done amazing things, and I absolutely appreciate that.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just say, it has been a pleasure for me also over the last eight years. The city is really in good hands. That's one thing I've learned since I've been on city council. Scott Brunka as the city manager, Dan Burke handling the fiscal matters, and Mark Urich's legal advice has just been exemplary. And Mayor, I, you have been on council so long, you do such a good job as mayor. Our vice mayor is doing just as well. It has really been a pleasure. And let me also say, I think this city is heading in the right direction. We are expanding our economic base. We're expanding geographically with the development on North Broadway. We are improving our Mulberry Street district in a great way, and we're doing all this while maintaining the small-town feel that all of us love so much. The books are in great shape, the laws are in great shape. It has been an honor for me to serve, and again, such a pleasure to serve with you folks. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, Your Honor, again, thanks. Appreciate the kind words. Certainly enjoyed time on council. It's, it's a bit difficult for me. I don't think my season of serving is over for the city. I think I'm going to do my best to stay quite engaged with the community in a lot of different ways. We've got, hopefully, opportunities to work with the city as they do the comprehensive plan and a number of other opportunities that I think I'm going to look forward to being engaged with. This is a great community, every aspect of it, and I look forward to what the future holds. You know, when you, when you pray about something and you ask that God's will be done and things happen a certain way, then I can't question that. There's obviously something else for me to do, so.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that. Appreciate the support. I'll be close by, and don't worry. So, thank you.
And we have for you, Councilmember Ailer, my friend.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And Councilmember Ailer is celebrating 36, 36, is it?
36 years today.
36 years today. So congratulations. Congratulations.
That's awesome. Yes. Another great accomplishment. I would also just like to say that it's really been fun to serve with you guys. We have a very functional council, which I really appreciate. I mean, we all know all kinds of communities around the country, and truth is stranger than fiction, but we've got an entire group of people that are just good people, and it's wonderful to serve with you both and all of you. And Mr. Deary is very correct in the status of the city is really good, and hopefully just more and more good things to come, so, but we will miss you guys.
I'd like to say, Mr. Deary, I started this whole thing with you and kind of cut my teeth the same time you were, and you've been an amazing council member to work with. I think specifically, the thing that rings back that you really pushed through and brought to our attention was a school resource officer. That was, that was kind of your thing, bringing it to the board and getting that ball rolling. So I definitely thank you for that, and, and we can see how that program is blossoming already. And Mr. Ailer, you've challenged me ever since you were on the board, so you've, you've made me a better council member, so I just want to thank you both for, for your service to the community, and you guys have been amazing.
Thanks, Your Honor.
Now, when I, back, gosh, the 90s, I worked in full-time for the city, and I watched what I thought was a council ruin, a city manager's health, and then I watched his follower just about put our finances as far south as they could possibly go, and I remember saying, "Never again." And I made, right then, the day I can run for council, I'm running, because I'm never going to let somebody do this to my town again. And then, you know, two years ago, it's like, well, we don't really have those same concerns anymore because of the cooperation and the things that have happened, and it's because of, you know, the, the council makeup that we've had, and it's been, it's been neat. So I still wanted to serve, but that need of, you know, having this, I got to fix this, wasn't there anymore, because, is there, I think we've lost a wealth of experience